Thank you very much Spencer. Congratulations to each one of us. Thank you Iris. Okay, we shall proceed to our initial convening agenda today is... Today is July 12, 2023 and it is now 7:02 PM. May I ask all those who are unmuted to mute please? Thank you. Okay, rules of speaking. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under two minutes and those giving reports are encouraged to keep their reports under three minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. Please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comments or questions. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission office website. Please silence all electronic devices now. Note, the board may take action on any agenda item. As required by the State Sunshine Law, HRS Chapter 92, specific issues not listed on this agenda cannot be voted on unless properly added to the agenda. Okay, first up, we have our election of officers since this is an initial convening meeting. So we are going to elect Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and Treasurer. So the floor is now open for nominations.
This is Ikaike. I'd like to nominate Mamizuno to continue as Chair of the board.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to nominate?
Raise hand.
Mister?
A second motion for me.
No. Who is this?
Uh, Simeon.
Oh, hi, Mr. Rojas.
Yes, a second motion that for Mamizuno.
Oh, thank you, but I believe we don't need a second right now. We just need the nominations.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Any more nominations? Mr. Kumalay.
Recommission to close nominations.
A second, a second motion.
Okay, there is a motion to move, to close the nomination and it has been seconded. Spencer.
I, I just wanted to make a point of clarification. So we won't need a motion to close. Um, so yeah, we'll just be open for nominations and then Chairman Mizuno, since you're nominated, you'll just pass the gavel to Vice Chair Ethan Dayton just for this voting section.
Oh, okay. Yeah, 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 alright, sounds good.
We'll need to do a roll call one-two and I can do that if you want.
Okay, okay, since I am being nominated as Chair of the Board, I am going to pass the gavel to Vice Chair Ethan Dayton.
Okay, thanks Chair. Um, yeah, so Spencer, if we, if you would like to do the roll call, then we can go ahead and do it that way. That way it's in, in order.
Okay, sure. I just wanted to double check there were no other nominations for Chair?
Yes.
Okay, hearing none. Ethan Dayton?
Aye.
Well, I'm sorry. Please say the name you wish to vote for.
Um, I for Mamizuno for Chair.
Okay, Randolph Franklin.
Vote for Mamizuno.
Ikaike Hasi?
I'm sorry, who'd you call?
You, Ikaike Hasi?
I vote for me.
Chester Koga?
I vote for me.
Alan Kumalay?
Mamizuno.
Simeon Rojas?
I vote for Mamizuno.
Hernando Tan?
I'm voting for Mamizuno.
And Lealoa Tumbaga?
Voting for Mamizuno.
And Ms. Mamizuno, how do you vote?
Voting for Mamizuno.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you so much, everyone and Board members for having your trust in me again for another two years. I hope someone else will take over next time. Thank you. Okay, can I proceed? Spencer? Or Ethan has to give me back the gavel.
Ethan will give the gavel back, yep.
Okay, yes, I will pass the gavel back. Chairman Mizuno, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we will proceed to our Vice Chair election. The floor is now open for nomination. Mr. Hernando Tan?
Madam Chair, I wish to nominate Lealoa Tumbaga as Vice Chair.
Okay, Lealoa Tumbaga. Ms. Lealoa Tumbaga is being nominated for a Vice Chair position. Any more nomination?
Well, I'd like to nominate Ethan. If, if he's still interested in serving, I'm not, I'm, we haven't spoken.
Uh, Mr. Ethan Dayton is also nominated as Vice Chair. Any more nomination? Any more nomination for the Vice Chair position? If not, we will, um, I guess, ask the nominees if they are willing to accept the nomination. Ms. Lealoa?
I accept my nomination.
Thank you. How about you, Mr. Dayton?
I accept my nomination.
Thank you very much. Um, we shall now proceed to the voting. Spencer?
Okay, once again, please say the name you wish to vote for. Randy Franklin?
Vote for Leila.
Ikaike Hasi?
Uh, I'll vote for Mr. Dayton.
Chester Koga?
Um, Lealoa.
Alan Kumalay?
Ethan Dayton.
Simeon Rojas?
Lealoa.
Hernando Tan?
Lealoa.
Chairman Mizuno?
Lealoa.
Ethan Dayton?
I vote for Ethan Dayton.
And Lealoa Tumbaga?
I vote for Lealoa Tumbaga.
Okay, congratulations, Lealoa. Um, you are elected Vice, uh, Vice Chair, two, three, four, five, six, with six votes. Um, if the Board would like to elect a second Vice Chair, they're able to do so as well if you guys determine.
Thank you very much and congratulations to our Vice Chair, Lealoa Tumbaga. Is there a wish for the Board to vote for a second Vice Chair?
Yes, I nominate Ethan.
No, wait, we have to, we have to approve it first.
Okay.
Is there a wish for the Board? Can I, um, have a hand raised if you wish to have a second Vice Chair? One, two, three, four, five, six. Is there a six, seven? Spencer?
Yep, I see, uh, I see all hands raised except for Chester. So yeah, that motion would pass with, um, with the quorum number.
Perfect, so we are going to vote for the second Vice Chair. The floor is now open for nomination for the second Vice Chair.
I nominate Ethan.
Mr. Franklin nominates Ethan, Mr. Ethan Dayton. Uh, Mr. Dayton? Did you raise your hand?
Sorry, I still think it's, I still think it's up there. I just took it off.
Okay, alright. Any more nomination for second Vice Chair? If not, shall we go for a vote again, Mr. Spencer?
Okay, this vote is for the second Vice Chair. Randy Franklin?
Vote for Ethan.
Ikaike Hasi?
I'll vote for Ethan.
Chester Koga? Chester?
Sorry, uh, must mute it. Vote for each.
Alan Kumalay?
Aye.
Ethan?
Mamizuno?
Mr. Dayton?
Simeon Rojas?
Vote for Ethan.
Hernando Tan?
I'm voting for Ethan.
Lealoa Tumbaga?
I vote for Ethan.
And Ethan Dayton, how do you vote?
I vote for Ethan.
Congratulations Ethan.
Congratulations, perfect. So we are going to open for nomination for a Secretary position at this time. Any nomination for Secretary? Mr. Tan? You're muted.
I move to nominate Chester Koga as Secretary.
Mr. Koga has been nominated as Secretary for, um, the Board. Any more nominations for Secretary position? Any more, last call for Secretary position? If not, let's go for a vote, Mr. Spencer.
Okay, Ethan Dayton?
I vote for Chester.
Randy Franklin?
I vote for Chester.
Ikaike Hasi?
Chester, 100%.
Alan Kumalay?
Or Chester?
Mamizuno?
Mr. Koga?
Simeon Rojas?
Mr. Koga.
Hernando Tan?
My vote is for Chester Koga.
Lealoa Tumbaga?
I vote for Chester Koga.
And Chester Koga, how do you vote?
I'll vote for myself.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Koga. We now move on to the Treasurer position. The floor is now open for nomination for a Treasurer position. Mr. Tan?
I move to nominate Alan Kumalay as Treasurer.
Mr. Alan Kumalay has been nominated as Treasurer. Any more nomination? Any more nomination as Treasurer for a Treasurer position? If not, let's go for a vote, Mr. Spencer.
Okay, this vote is to elect, um, Alan Kumalay as Board Treasurer. Ethan Dayton?
I vote for Alan.
Randy Franklin?
I vote for Alan.
Ikaike Hasi?
Sure, vote for Alan.
Chester Koga?
Uh, vote for Alan.
Chairman Mizuno?
For Mr. Kumalay.
Simeon Rojas?
For, uh, Mr. Kumalay.
Hernando Tan?
My vote is for Alan Kumalay.
Lealoa Tumbaga?
Vote for Alan Kumalay.
And Alan Kumalay?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much and congratulations to all the officers for this biennial, um, Neighborhood Board Number 16 officers. Congratulations to all of us. Okay, let's proceed to our agenda. We have our city monthly reports. Uh, first up, we have the Honolulu Fire Department. Please go ahead.
Good evenings, Captain Joe Hackbar at the Engine 32 Kaliluka Fire Station. Here's our statistics for the month of June 2023. We had one wildland brush fire and we had 53 medical alarms and one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian. Uh, safety tip, uh, growing safety. Keep these tips in mind as you enjoy your summer events and activities with family and friends. Always use barbecue grills outside, away from doors, windows, vents, and other building openings. Place the grill away from the siding and deck railings and out from under eaves and overhanging branches according to the manufacturer's instructions. Keep children and pets at least three feet away from cooking areas and keep starter fluid lighters and matches out of the reach of children. Cook with caution, be alert, and stay with the grill while cooking. Never leave a hot grill unattended. Light a propane grill, make sure the cover is open if the flame goes out. Turn the grill off to gas off, wait at least five minutes before re-lighting. Periodically remove grease or fat buildup in the trays below the grill so it cannot be ignited by a hot grill and then coals completely cool before disposing of in a metal container. Never empty coals directly into a trash can. Do not store or use a grill on a porch or balcony, including any porch or balcony on the upper levels in the building. Always store propane gas tanks outside of buildings or garages. Remember to properly inspect and maintain the tank fittings and tubing according to the manufacturer's instructions. Fapers, lead-in doors can be easily ignited by pilot lights or electrical equipment causing explosion. And that's the report for the home fire department for this month. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Captain Hackberth. Um, any questions from the Board for Honolulu Fire Department? I see and hear none. Any questions from the community? Thank you very much and we'll see you again next month, Captain.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. Okay, next up, we have the Honolulu Police Department. Please go ahead, sir.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Lieutenant Creighton Hatiko. I'm here with the Night Watch at the Kali Police Station. Um, here are some statistics for last month. Uh, we had two burglaries reported, uh, five motor vehicle thefts, nine general thefts, and six thefts from vehicles. Um, total calls for service were down a little bit. Uh, in May, we had 704 calls for service in your area. Uh, we were down to, in June, 643 calls. Um, I want to advise everyone that, uh, we're in summer for our children. Um, so there's a lot more young people in the streets in the neighborhood. Um, a lot of times, they don't pay attention to what they're doing around the roadways and, uh, it's a very, uh, busy roadways in our area. So, um, I ask that, um, as you guys drive and if you speak to people to warn them as they drive to, to try and have a little more, pay a little more attention to the area around them because a lot of times kids run into the street or riding bike into the street without paying attention. Um, I had a, a member ask about, uh, red light cameras at Lekelikian School Street. Um, so apparently the way it works, Department of Transportation handles the camera itself and then forwards the photos of the violations to our Traffic Division. One of our officers, um, reviews the, the traffic cam photos and decides if a violation occurred and then they issue the citations. Unfortunately, I'm not, I wasn't able to get a breakdown of the specific types of citations because I wasn't able to speak to the officer that does it. But, um, here's some counts for you. Uh, the traffic, that traffic light camera started in April, on April 10th of this year. And thus far, from the northeast approach to that intersection, that large intersection, they've issued 549 citations. From the northwest area, uh, sorry, northwest, uh, direction, they've issued 127 citations. From the southwest direction, they've issued 57 citations. And from the southeast direction, they've issued 81 citations for a total of 814. Um, that intersection is probably one of the larger of the ones that, uh, have a red light camera. But, um, count wise, uh, where it's, it's in the lower, uh, I mean, it's about average compared to, uh, other, uh, red light cameras that they have placed, um, along that corridor. Um, do I have any questions today?
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Tan followed by Mr. Koga.
Hi Lieutenant, uh, thank you for being with us tonight. Just a request, uh, can you, can you have your beat patrol, uh, check or follow up the illegal parkings on Hawiki Street and Lukilani? That curb over there, there's a lot of people who illegally park on the curb and it's unsafe.
Okay.
Because as you enter from Lukilani to Hawiki, you look, you look right, you look left, your, uh, visual is blocked by those illegal parking on the curb.
Okay, okay.
And secondly, I'm not sure if this for you, but, uh, the stoplight is that for you or the state?
Um, stoplight is, is handled by, it's, it's still going to be a city, a city function. Uh, you mean, is it, um, you talking about the timing of it or is it, um, functioning?
I'll share, I'll share what we are experiencing. So if you're from Lukilani, you turn right hit down to Hawiki School Street stoplight. And it, it's been happening for a long time. Um, as you turn left, heading towards the main side of School Street, as you turn left, you are now green. But somehow, cars coming from Gulik towards west. They always still as if they are green on their, on their side. So I will always caution my family and all of us that it happens many times. So when you're green, you're ready to go and you still have these cars going, heading west, buzzing through you. So as I have observed somehow, I observed that the stoplight, if you are angling in your observation from Kino Street, uh, looking towards west, uh, I noticed that the Kino, uh, street green light on School Street is green, but the next, uh, traffic light, it's, it's red. And somehow, when they're green, they just forget about the second stoplight that's red and they keep going. Somehow, I noticed that.
Is it, um, so you, you saying it's a coordination problem between the lights?
It seems to be a sequence problem of coordination, yes.
Yeah.
And many times, I'm, I myself and I be said, whoa, shoot, two cars going, what happened, right? So one of these days, hopefully not, uh, there will be accident. So if, if someone could check on the timing and sequence and all that.
I think, um, I need to double check on who handles that, but, because like whenever we have issues with the traffic lights, uh, we contact a dispatch and we have a, a traffic light man who comes out and checks it. But I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if they're the ones that deal with the specific timing of the lights and the durations, um, but I will try and see if I can find out though.
Yeah, I appreciate you getting the message or request.
No problem, no problem, Mr. Tan.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Koga.
I found kind of, um, maybe a question that maybe not directed to you and maybe you can't address it. But, uh, can you provide us with an update on, on the shooting that occurred at the shopping center?
Uh, when, when was this, sir?
Uh, oh, couple of days ago.
Shooting. Which, which shopping center did it occur at, sir?
Uh, the Cameramea.
Oh, at Camp Shopping Center, oh. Shoot, I'm not sure if that occurred during my watch or not, um.
Okay, no, I, I mean, a lot of times you guys don't report on those items and plus some other things, so just curious. Okay, thank you.
I can give you an update though, sir. Like you wondering, um, if someone is arrested and that sort of thing?
Yeah.
Um, I'll find out for you and then I'll, I'll let you guys know at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, sir.
Chair, can I intervene?
Representative Mizuno, you have something to say?
Yeah, I met with HPD officials yesterday and they talked about the shooting that occurred that was on North School Street, uh, very near Camp Shopping Center. Uh, it involved, uh, two people, um, for whatever reason. And we don't want to make it bigger than it is, but, um, they're both going to refuse to file charges against each other. Looks to be that it was a situation where two groups didn't agree. Um, at this point, that, that's, we, the law's a law, but we can't force, uh, someone to try to press charges. Um, that's what I do know, uh, of the shooting that occurred a couple of days ago on North School Street, right across from, uh, Camp Shopping Center. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, uh, let's go to the Kapalama Halli Room. Someone had raised, is, or has, uh, Ms. Song? Uh, hold on, Mr. Um, Song. We are asking all the Board members first before the community. Okay, Mr. Franklin?
Yes, I, I have a question with, what, uh, uh, Representative Mizuno said, because it, I don't understand if, if you shoot each other, that's not like a private person arrest. They both use a deadly weapon, so they, if they both have guns, they both should be taken into custody. Maybe Lieutenant can explain to me how shooting each other is not a crime if you don't prosecute each other? I, I don't understand that concept.
Um, based on a clarification from Rep. Mizuno, um, there was only one firearm used, I believe, and the person shot, uh, is not cooperating with us. He's not, he doesn't want to give a statement, he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to prosecute.
But we do know that person, we knew that person was shot, right? So he was shot, so the person was taken in custody. So what I'm confused about, if you shoot someone and they don't want to, you still go to custody for shooting that person? Because if you had an accidental discharge and you hurt somebody in your house, you will go to jail for 18 months. So if I shoot someone and they don't want to press charges against me, the mere fact that I shot him does not count?
Uh, no one is arrested for that case.
Even though he shot someone with a gun?
Who, who shot someone? The suspect?
Apparently, apparently you think someone was shot with a gun.
Yeah, but the person?
If no one was arrested for shooting that person. But no one was arrested for shooting? I mean, he shot someone, but he was not taken into custody because the person shot did not want to file a report? I, I'm confused.
Yeah, let me, let me explain it to you. There was altercation between two groups.
Right?
They're saying a person took out a gun and, and shot another person. There's only one person who shot. The person who did the shooting fled and we, we're not able to identify them at this time. So no one was arrested for it. The person who got shot is not electing to give us any kind of statement or try to ID anyone in this case, that's where it's at.
But a crime report was taken for that person to be apprehended.
Yes, that's correct, and we are still actively trying to identify this person.
Okay, now I'm not confused anymore, I thought the police showed up and just said, dude, you shot somebody, but he won't cooperate, so we'll just let it go. All right, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much, um Mister Rojas.
Yes, um, a question for the officer. Um, in our neighborhood, um is there a rule for um so many groups to be hanging out in in a um, in one area? As far as maybe if, is there like a timeframe? You know, um on the street to hang out, especially on the main street? Uh, that would be my question.
There's, there's not really like a, we don't, there's not like a set timeframe that we see in those kinds of situations where it's by streets. We, our main concern is that it's not blocking a roadway or a sidewalk, um and also what the group is doing, yeah? Um, we of- we often disperse people that are making um loud noise, or if they're being um disruptive to the neighborhood, we address it. But in terms of laws, um we don't really have for um congregating in in public spaces. Um, you know, any amount of people can congregate and then, but we have to, we have to base our reaction to what they're doing. Is there anything specific that you are thinking of?
I think I I I understand your parameters, uh sir.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, um Representative Mizuno would like to add to that issue.
Yeah, Lieutenant Hatiko, I apologize and Mister Franklin, I apologize. Probably did not say it in the clearest manner, so I just apologize, but again Lieutenant, thank you for clarifying, really appreciate it.
No problem.
That's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you sir.
Thank you very much, um let's see, any other board member who wish to ask question to Lieutenant Hatiko? If not, any questions from the community, Mister Soong?
Thank you, uh Lieutenant, I just have a question, uh where can we find out the uh traffic fines uh for the red light cameras? Is there a a public space that we can go to? To see which ones being fined the most or?
I I'm gonna, I'm I'm still gonna follow up on the um to try and get the specific what types of citations that are being um issued. So I'll try and get that information as well for you guys. Um, the fines for those, it's gonna be for the crimes such as um uh not yielding on a red light uh for the right turn. Um, rolling through the red light um in general. And um also probably for not yielding for pedestrians in that area. But I'll I'll check on it and make sure and I'll get you guys the final amounts.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much, Mister Simeon Rojas, second time?
Yes Officer, um you know, we we went to Fourth of July here in Kalih Valley. Uh, were there any um, you know, major reports as far as, you know, illegal fireworks or any type of loud booming noises? I mean, I love fireworks, um but it's just that um, I think it, it would be nice to kinda like lower down the noise, especially if you're a veteran.
Um, yeah, I understand completely sir. Um, in in my experience, this last Fourth of July that we had um that night, uh there weren't that many calls as compared to say um New Year's Eve and uh in my experience, the last time, the last Fourth of July I worked, I was in District Two. And um it seems, it seemed kinda mellow, we didn't have too many calls specifically about fireworks or uh fireworks related injuries.
Thank you very much.
No problem sir.
Thank you, thank you very much, any more questions from the board or the community? Seeing none, I have a question Lieutenant. You know where um the Kalih Valley Homes entrance, the new entrance that they opened on Allo Street?
Mm-hmm.
Are you aware of that sir?
Is that the one that where where they're doing the construction currently?
Um, the construction, I believe, is on the other side, so they opened the Allo Street entrance.
Oh, because they closed it, okay.
Right, correct, but um we receive a lot of um complaints from the neighborhood in, on Wilson Track. That uh, there's a lot of illegal U-turns and whatnot from there going to the housing. And just today, when I was coming home, there were at least three cars who turned left to that entrance and it's there's a very big sign over there saying no left turn nor U-turn. So how do we enforce that? Can we do something about that?
I I'll, I'll put my officers on it, um and we'll try to monitor it um specifically for that reason. Um, I didn't realize that that was occurring, so now that I'm aware, I'll make sure my officers get on it.
Well, thank you very much, and I'm going to bring that up to the state officials as well since um Liki Liki is um state issue.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much, and any, any more questions? Before Lieutenant Hatiko goes. I see and here none, thank you very much and see you next month sir.
Thank you, everyone have a nice evening.
You too. Next up, we have the Board of Water Supply, Mister and Miss Iris Oda.
Hi everyone, congratulations officers and all board members. Um, so I'm clapping for you. I just wanted to report, there was one main break on June twenty-second. It was an eight-inch cast iron near two zero six seven Kamia Mia Four Road. So I do a main break report and then just one general announcement. So July is smart irrigation month, when outdoor water use typically increases. Within a normally hot and dry summer and below normal rainfall, please use your part to use less water. I got four examples, one is install a weather-based irrigation controller. This device uses local weather stations to adjust your irrigation systems, operating times based on the plant's watering needs. You can apply for a rebate for up to a hundred dollars from the Board of Water Supply for that. Number two is there's install a rain barrel, which catches rainwater and holds it for later use. You can use it on lawns, gardens, or indoor plants. So that could also qualify for a forty-dollar rebate from the Board of Water Supply. Number three is, we suggest we uh water before nine AM and after five PM. And number four is inspect your irrigation system for leaks and misdirected or broken sprinkler heads. So you, for more information, you can go to our BoardOfWaterSupply.com/irrigation. So just those four notes, uh four suggestions, and if there's any questions.
Thank you Iris, any questions from the board? For the Board of Water Supply? Mister Rojas?
Yes, for the rebate, is that only pertaining to Kalih Valley or is this pertaining to the whole, the whole um Oahu?
Oh yes, islands of Oahu residents, so if you have to, you know, water, um as long as you get water from the Board of Water Supply.
Okay, so um, residents, what about agriculture?
Um, I, you know, that's a good question, I will ask about that, I would think if you're a water, you pay a water bill, you should be able to. Um, but I will ask that, so agricultural user.
Yes we do, because sometimes agriculture use can be um city water as well.
Of course, yes, thank you. I'll let you know next month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, any more questions for the Board of Water Supply? From the board? Seeing none, any questions from the community? I see and here none, thank you very much, Ms. Iris Oda.
All right, thank you.
Mister Rojas, can you please uh um bring your hands down now? Thank you. Okay, um moving on, we have our meeting determination date, time, and location for August twenty-twenty-three to June twenty-twenty-four. Before we proceed to that, may I ask Mister Spencer, um any heads up on our in-person meeting venue?
Uh, yes, so we, I'm still waiting to hear back from our facility coordinator about um Kai Vai. Um, but I was talking to Auntie Lynette about it and um we'll stay in contact. And um just so you know, for these motions, we won't need a roll call, we can do them unanimously.
Hmm. Okay, thank you, thank you very much, most likely, we're, let's hope and pray that we're gonna have Kai Vai Elementary School as our venue for this year at least. Well, right now there is um thumbs up from the principal, so we just need to follow through. Okay, so for now, we just have to do hybrid Spencer?
Um, yeah, the board, the board can actually vote to um to meet at Kai Vai pending their contract and then, you know, until we get the contract, we will uh continue to meet as we are.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so um pending approval, we have Kai Vai Elementary School as our location for August until June twenty-twenty-four. And the date and time, can we, can we meet at the same dates and time? First, I know, I mean, second Wednesday of the month and time would be seven PM. Is that okay with everyone? Okay?
A pick-up motion that we uh approve a location as Kai Vai Elementary pending uh receive, re- receiving the contract on the second Wednesday of the month and seven PM to nine PM.
Thank you very much Mister Kumalai, do we need a second for that Spencer? I guess so, yeah?
I know for the officers, we don't, but you know, be safe, might as well someone second it.
Okay, any second for the motion?
Second.
Mister Tan, okay, it has been moved and seconded, let's vote. All those in favor say aye? Or raise hand?
Aye.
All those opposed say no, the motion is carried. So let's move on to our determination of board recess schedule from August twenty-twenty-three to June twenty-twenty-four. Um, right now or in the past, our recess days are May and December. So we have two recess days in a year, so we had May and December. Can we um stay on that recess days? Is everybody okay with that? Unless there is an objection? Okay? Can I get a motion to, to have our recess days on May and December twenty-twenty-three?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to have our recess days for May twenty-twenty-three and December twenty-twenty-three for the year August? No, I'm sorry, December twenty-twenty-three and May twenty-twenty-four for the year August twenty-twenty-three to June twenty-twenty-four. Is that clear enough? Okay, so let's vote, all those in favor say aye, raise hand?
Raise hand.
All those opposed say no, the motion is carried. Let's, so we have our May, no, December and May recess days. Okay, adoption of oral testimon- testimony rules. Can I get a motion to stay on our um testimony rules currently?
I'm hope to adopt the same uh testimony rules as we have in the past, to be continued.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded for our adoption of oral testimony rules to be the same. All those in favor say aye or raise hand?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? The motion is carried, okay, we're getting there. Establishing an o- regular order for agendas. Are we all okay with our regular agenda?
I had one suggestion if I could.
Sure.
Which is that um, just because our, our, you know, neighborhood board meetings in general tend to be quite lengthy um and and late in the evening. Um, I wanted to to ask if maybe we could make it a part of our normal routine that um written reports, like the reports that were provided to us earlier this evening, that they be read by all of us in advance of the meeting. And we reserve the time in in the meeting for discussion as opposed to um, as opposed to reading of the reports. Uh, which, which is not as useful, but it is absolutely important that we have opportunity for there to be question and answer, you know, that sort of back and forth.
Okay, so um there is a proposal for our regular reports to be submitted and be read by each one of us? Is that what it is Mister um?
Yes, and for us to reserve the time in the meeting itself for Q and A and not for reading of the reports.
Okay, alright, Mister Koga?
I I I second that suggestion. The, the only other thing that I would have is um, you know, if we could move the resident concerns like to almost to the right after the city monthly reports, you know, please, because um, yeah, I think it's a little unfair to move um those resident concerns to the back or bottom of the agenda.
So you wanted the residents' concerns um on where?
Oh, right, right after the city monthly reports?
Oh, that's what we've been doing, I think.
Uh, no you haven't.
No?
No, it's been after the uh elected officials or previously, it's moved up uh a little bit.
Yeah, we moved it up um since there was a request on that. So it's before the city elected officials, actually, we've been doing for the past several months already.
Yeah, just want to uh make sure that if we're gonna fix the agenda, then that's my suggestion.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you, so do we need a motion for that Spencer?
Um, no, we don't.
No, we don't?
It's up to the chair to create the agenda, so you can actually put it however you want, any month.
Okay, alright, how about the reports? Do we request for everyone to send in a written report? Rather than reading it during the meeting?
Uh, I would have to get clarification on if you can skip reading it during the meeting, but uh it would be nice to request all reports and we can also get it posted on the Google Drive and we can use that for members to view all the reports before the meeting.
Okay, so we can hold on to that and for now, we're just going to um uh do our regular order for the agendas and the reports. Any objection? Any objection?
Just for discussion and clarification, I think Mister Koga, if you look at the agenda as we are looking at it right now. Uh, I guess he, I, I, I'm trying to speak for him. Um, the residence and community concerns would be after call to order. Before you call the city monthly reports, that would be ahead that now. I don't know, Mister Koga, I saw what you meant, I, I kinda agree to that actually.
Mister Koga.
I think it'd be like the second, second major item of agenda item. You know, right after the city monthly reports.
Right after, right, so that's what we've been doing for the, the past few months now.
That was, that's what we've been doing, yeah.
Yeah. That's what we've been doing now, yeah. The reason why it, it looks like they are on the bottom is because we're doing our uh meeting determination date and time is. All this stuff. Okay, so let's um vote on. The same agenda and the regular order. For the agendas, I guess, so if there is, if there is no objection, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Raise hand? All those opposed say no, the motion is carried, okay? Let's move on to establishing committees, subcommittees and their membership. In the past, we have. Several um committees established, like um, what did we have in the past? Committee on, the standing committees that we had, the state and county budget committee. Uh, there was a sidewalk committee, there was an S curve and transportation committee. Beautification committee, R P Z committee. Do you have any specific committees that you would like to establish at this point?
I wonder if maybe the. If the S curve transportation committee could be combined with the sidewalks committee, just because they're all dealing with a lot of the same sort of issues? And um, if I could please not be in charge of it?
Okay, so there is um. A sidewalk committee and S curve, S curve and transportation committee. Um, to be combined, that's a good one, cause that's um, it's almost the same issue anyways.
Right.
Okay, so also, we also have the beautification committee, the R P Z committee, are we all good in that? I'm, the chair has to assign the, the chair of these committees, yes Spencer, if I am not mistaken.
Actually, I have a question for Spencer, do, does the uh, do the members of the committees have to be. Uh, limited to board members or can we enlist support from non-board members?
You can, you can um have non-board members.
Okay, yeah, there were several people who wanted to serve on the board, um, I'd be willing to, to chair that. You know, kind of combined transportation committee, but only in the condition that I can bring on some of those other folks. Uh, who have, you know, a, a lot of zeal and passion, I think, for these issues.
Yeah, non-board members are um welcome to join for this one.
Okay.
However, the chairs has to be the board members of the Neighborhood Board sixteen. Correct me Spencer if I'm wrong.
You sound good, Chair.
Thank you, thank you. Mister Simeon Rojas, are you raising your hand?
Yes, um, I just wanted to find out if um, that to establish the committee. Does it have to be today or can we add into the com- to a committee? Like, for example, like but, or create a committee? Um, as far as um, I think Ikaka had mentioned about transportation and the sidewalks can go together. So beautification, I'm, I'm kinda wanted to maybe, not, not at this point, trying to figure it out, but um, since my first meeting. I'm thinking about sustainability.
Sustainability committee.
With the beautification, maybe?
With the beautification committee altogether, oh, okay, sustainability.
That's a great idea.
I agree. Okay, so how about uh the sidewalk and the S curve and transportation committee to be combined? Then beautification and sustainability committee combined and the R P Z committee. So we have three standing committees that we're going to, oh no, we have the state and county budget committee as well.
Yeah.
So there are four. Standing committees.
You know, that, that budget committee, I wonder if it makes sense to structure that as a pig? Because it's uh, I think we would wanna solicit um, input from the broader community on, on those questions.
So what did you wanna do with it again, sorry?
Make it not a standing committee, because it doesn't really have work all year round, it really is just kinda focused on. Really just kind of the fall time, fall and winter, maybe if that were structured as a permitted interaction group. Um, with a limited duration.
We can always add it to the agenda later on. And for now, we can strike that out if everybody is okay with that, Mister Koga.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't agree, because that's, that's almost like uh something that we should be doing all year long, because uh. If you think about it, you know, we went through this past budget cycle with no interaction with the budget. And we may have missed out on something, whatever something was. Because we didn't make any budget proposals to either the state or the county this year. You know, uh Lynn's out there, so maybe she can uh correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember. Making any proposals to the city or state for budget items.
Yeah, that's a great one, Chester.
And if you think about it, you know, by the time, uh, I think the, for the state budget, you know, by the time, I think was like. Um, October or November, you know, the, the state administration has to file their budgets. And then likewise with the county, you know, it's like early next year, so it's sort of like. If we wanna get in on it early, we gotta be in and figuring it out, like figuring out projects now, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, wh- when is our re- our recess months?
December and May.
December and May, okay, so like if we were to put into the agenda for August and September. Um, conversations about the, the budget, that might be a good time, Chester, would that make sense?
No, absolutely, yeah, because we wanna be, be thinking about it before the end of the year, because the. Because if you wait until like January, you know, what it called, let's say you convince in January.
Right. Yeah, Chair Mayor, would you be okay with adding that to the, our agendas for the next two months?
For the next two months, the state and county budget committee.
Yeah, we're like, yeah.
We can just add it for the entire year if you guys wish to.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so right now, we have four standing committees that we are going to vote on. The sidewalk. I know, the state and county budget committee, the sidewalk, S curve and transportation committee. Third is the beautification and sustainability committee. Fourth is the R P Z committee. Is there any objection to that? If not, can it be a voice vote Spencer? Okay, if not, we can vote on it, all those in favor say aye or raise hand?
Aye.
All those opposed say no, the motion is carried. Now, we have, or the chair has to appoint the chairs for this um standing committees. For the state and county budget committee, I would like to, the chair would like to appoint Mister Chester Koga. Is it okay Mister Koga?
Well, I was gonna say, yeah, that was Nathan's position, so I, I defer to him.
Mister Ethan, are you okay with that? You can be his member.
Yes.
Yes.
And you can work together, right? Okay, sounds good, for the sidewalk, S curve and transportation committee. You don't want it Mister Hasi anymore?
Uh, I, I'm willing to do it, but I, I need help, so.
Okay, you can have, we can have co-chairs, Mister Hasi and who's willing to volunteer? From the board.
Very nice guy.
Uh, there you go, okay, so you guys are co-chair Mister Hasi and Mister Dayton. For the sidewalk, S curve and transportation committee.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll try to find a cashier name.
Okay, now we have this beautification and sustainability committee. Uh, the chair would like to appoint co-chairs, Mister Franklin and Mister Simeon Rojas. For this standing committee. For the R P Z committee, I would like to, I mean, the chair would like to appoint. Mister Kumalai, maybe co-chairs Mister Kumalai. And I want Mister Hernando Tan to do something, so co-chairs Mister Tan, Mister Kumalai.
I defer my duty to uh, uh instead propose or nominate uh Miss Ali Aloha.
Okay, so you're declining is what you're trying to say?
Yes.
Okay, let, let me rephrase my appointment, I want to. Or the chair want to appoint co-chairs Mister Kumalai and Miss Lee Aloha Tumbaga. For the R P Z committee. Cool, okay, there you go. Thank you, thank you, Mister Kumalai, thank you as well, okay, for the board business. We have the one thousand dollars outreach, uh, community outreach, Miss, Miss Tumbaga, do you have any report for that?
I believe we left off with um. Was it, I think now we can uh, uh, use the funds to. We can have ten banners and then even interchangeable locations on the banners and. We do need to decide on locations, like maybe ten, nine locations, uh, I know we're probably gonna do the schools. Like Kalihii, Uka and Kaevai, uh, those are two main ones, but yeah, any other ideas for even, I think. I think we were gonna have people's uh fences, like tho- those like corner houses as well, facing the highway would be nice. Uh, if you guys have suggestions or know those people, um, send me those contacts, please, so I can.
Wait, come out, I know this um, uh, community outreach, uh, one thousand dollars is only up. Until June thirtieth, we haven't purchased that yet?
Um, what Spencer was um, saying is that you could only like use it after, for some reason in the emails. Um, yeah, uh, you can clarify, um, uh Spencer.
Clarify it for us, please?
Yeah, sure, so I had, I had brought this up at the end of June and our um budget. It was too, it was too close to the end to make any major purchases like that, but Executive Secretary Yone Naka. Um, this is something he would like to continue. Um, not a whole lot of boards took a, a lot of advantage of it. So he kinda wants to keep it around for options, um, he wants the boards to get out there and do some, do some outreach and. Um, make the, make the boards more relevant and just provide publicity, so. Um, he's gonna, yeah, it's still available, yeah, so. Um, I was just gonna wait to see if the meeting date, time and location were to change. Um, which it didn't, so um, yeah, I'll go ahead and put that, um, the order in next week.
Very good, perfect, so right now, Miss Lee Aloha created the banner. Up to how many banners now for the one thousand dollars, ten?
I believe we can do ten, yes.
Ten, and interchangeable um venue. Meaning you put a Velcro, if for example, we change our venue, we can put a Velcro on our venue like. Kai Bai Elementary School, so we can just snap it on a Velcro easier for all of us to um, do it. So, and if you guys have any particular areas that um you wanna put every month, you can let us know. And so we can give you the banner maybe, so you will be in charge in putting up that banner, banner every month. And put up the specific ven- venue that we're going to have. And we're all good with that, right? That's perfect, great job, Miss Tumbaga. Mister Simeon, any questions?
Yes, um, I, I noticed about the, where we're gonna locate, I think um, the most um. Point of entry and also the most point of exit, so maybe we can kinda like. Ask information from the transportation or whoever is the uh comedian that. High traffic area.
Oh, okay, that's a good one, yeah, we can do that. We can do that, thank you, thank you very much, um, let me just um. Real quick, Mister Armstrong was asking me on the chat if we are going to address community concerns. We are already beyond that, the residence concerns, did we, did I pass up? No, we didn't, I'm so sorry.
It's, it's next on the agenda, ma'am.
You skipped over some things.
Oh, I skipped it, I'm, I apologize, I apologize Mister Armstrong, okay, let me just finish this. Where are we now?
You're at point thirteen.
Thirteen. Oh, for real, no, I was looking at the, oh, hmm, sorry about that, okay, 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 I'm sorry, backtrack. Let's go back to, to the um, number nine on our agenda. Residence and community concerns, Mister Armstrong.
Thank you Chair Mizuno, I just have a brief announcement about a neighborhood, uh, excuse me, an island-wide meeting. That's available to all the residents of your neighborhood, all board members and everyone on this island. It's been about fifteen years since we took a look at the neighborhood board system and revitalized and regenerated and reinvigorated the system. And so we're gonna have an organizational meeting to begin that process, in no way is it a short process, but uh, we have to start somewhere. So the first organizational meeting of the neighborhood board system is Saturday nineteenth of August at one P M. At eleven fifty-two Smith Street in Chinatown, eleven fifty-two Smith Street is the old. Channel fourteen television studios, it's now the New Life Center. Uh, again, that's the nineteenth of August at one P M and there's city parking right off of Baritania, there's a garage right behind the building and so. It's pretty easy access and it's a pretty large facility at eleven fifty-two Smith Street. So I hope that I could get everyone who's watching and listening and participating to be part of this meeting as well, nineteenth of August. At the Saturday, one P M, eleven fifty-two Smith Street, thank you Chair.
Had a quick question for Bob.
Go ahead.
Bob, um, was there an, was there a meeting this month as well? For the same, oh, no, okay, alright.
Thank you, thank you very much, any questions for um Mister Armstrong? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Any more residence or community concerns at this time? Mister Soong, followed by Mister Kevin Magnuson, so Mister Soong first.
Thank you, my name is James Soong, today's uh meeting is a Thiracle Hee Board meeting where I could. continue discussing red light cameras. I am upset with the camera because instead of fixing the intersection, the state has decided to tax the resident. They are just passing their responsibilities from themselves to the resident. I emailed all the board members, as many as I could, my notes with pictures so you could see what I'm talking about. I mentioned red light cameras are punishing low-income residents in the previous meeting. The two low-income areas in the picture below are Mayor Wright and Kukui Gardens. These housings are next to two of the Vineyard Boulevard red light cameras outlined in blue. The next section is KPT and Kalihii Valley Homes in red, outlined in red. These two, uh, low-income housings pass through the Wihiki-Wihiki Highway, uh, red light camera, outlined in blue. It is easy for me to talk about low-income housing in the Kalihii area since this is where most of the low-income housings and red light cameras are in the Kalihii area. Next is Vineyard Boulevard, with the four red light cameras outlined in blue. Since the state placed four red light, uh, cameras on this, uh, three-and-a-half-mile road, uh, the state is telling us this is the most dangerous road. Mister John Mizuna, uh, since the state has control over this road, should the state make this road safer? Kalihii Valley Bar members, do you feel you, uh, your driving is so dangerous that the state has to place red light cameras to punish you wherever, whenever you get out of control? Is there a solution to all of this madness? Below is a picture of North School Street and Wihiki-Wihiki Highway. The first thing is for Governor, uh, Josh Green to cut, uh, cut or fill in the grass areas. Next, town, uh, bound lane, you can move the bus stop from the Makai side to the Makka side of Wihiki-Wihiki Highway in the morning, cause the buses cause a bottleneck. Moving the bus stop will give the buses more room to change lanes. Next, I formally request a traffic study to see what direction people are going in this intersection. We can use proper lane mathematics after determining which routes people use the most. For example, should there be two left-turning lanes on the North, uh, School Street going towards Eva instead of one? Should the left, should the left-turning lanes be extended in all directions heading to Diamond Head? Should there be a right, uh, turning lane only on North School Street? We need to fix these intersections before the red light, uh, contracts expire. I guess I'm gonna ask the governor's representative about, uh, a study about these intersections, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mister Soong. Sorry, uh, sorry about my pronunciation of your last name, but the representative, governor's representative, do you have anything to respond to Mister Soong's request? Deputy Director Kristin Sakamoto.
Aloha Chair, um, I do not have anything at this time, but I can take these concerns back to the office of the governor. Um, so I understand the question is regarding a traffic study. If I could get the specific locations, um, where the study or the question is related to, I can take that information back and, um, follow up with the board. Thank you.
We can email you, yes.
Oh, she can't hear me out.
Go ahead, Mister Soong.
Okay, and you?
Yeah.
Uh, so wherever there's a red light camera, and especially on Vineyard Boulevard, since it's only three-and-a-half miles, uh, if we could do a traffic study on that one short little road?
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next, we have Mister Kevin Magnussen.
Thank you. My name's, uh, Kevin Magnussen. I live at the top of Uki Uki Place, and my concern is with the extremely large albezia tree growing behind my property. I believe it's a hazard tree, and there's a number of them in the community. Um, I was hoping to get the state or the city to help with, um, eradicating this tree, this particular tree, um, in particular, and, um, maybe many more trees along the ridge of Uki Uki, Uki Uki Place and in Kalihii Valley. I'd like to thank Representative Mizuno for reminding me to come and present my concerns at today's meeting. Thank you.
Hold on one second. Um, Spencer?
Yeah, I can, uh, send this request to the mayor's office. I just, I got the street name Uki Uki Place. Is there a, like a, a number or any kind of closer information you can provide to the tree you'd like us to look at?
My, it, the tree is directly behind, um, my property at thirty sixty-five. It is actually on, um, the property of thirty seventy-one. Uki Uki.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Representative Mizuno, followed by Lynn, followed by Mister Franklin.
I wanted to thank Kevin. Great talking to you today. Thank you for being here. Um, I guess you're aware that we had a albezia tree workshop last month, and, uh, we're glad to get your email about your concerns. Albezia trees, um, are invasive species and they create safety hazards for people, and not only in Kalihii, but it also affects, adversely affects community infrastructure. These trees can grow rapidly in the first five years. Branches are large and brittle, many times breaking, falling down causes significant damages to roads, homes and power lines, and so, Kevin, we, we do hear you. Uh, I did, um, email out, I think we have an email chain with councilmember Dos Santos Tam, myself, uh, Mitsuda and Lynn Robinson, who I see that's on here, along with May Mizuno. So, we'll work with you in the mayor's office to try to address the concerns with the albezia tree on thirty seventy-one Uki Uki Place. Um, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, let's stay working together and in touch and try to address this. Uh, I think it would be good if both myself, if Senator Kim were available, and councilmember Dos Santos Tam, if we can go and check out the spot and perhaps talk to the neighbors, and also get the Department of, um, I would think Department of Land and Natural Resources, if it is a hazard, and, uh, probably city parks, cause they deal with trees, if it is a hazard, to possibly work with the neighbor located at thirty seventy-one Uki Uki Place, to see if we can agree and collaborate on taking down that invasive tree. So thank you for participating, and let's stay in touch.
Miss Lynn?
Aloha. Kevin, thanks so much for being here. I think I saw the email that, um, about Uki Uki Place just today, and I did see that, um, councilmember Dos Santos Tam was wanting to put you in touch with J C Watson, who was our facilitator, um, for that albezia tree mitigation meeting, so, um, I have, you know, I can absolutely circle back with you and make sure that you're also in touch with um, J C, and obviously all of Representative Mizuno's, um, other suggestions for collaboration would be great. Um, so, thanks for, um, being at the meeting and thanks for reaching out, and we'll continue to work with you.
Hold on. Um, Mister Franklin?
Sorry Chair, I think, uh, Representative Mizuno answered my question, cause I just wanted to know if the tree was a hazard or not. Uh, the reason why we was asking to cut the tree down, mainly because I guess it must be a hazard, but it didn't, he didn't, it wasn't stated that the tree limb was over his house, or was big, or was uprooting the foundation or anything, so that's why I was asked, I think John answered the question for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Representative Mizuno, second time.
Yes, Lynn Robinson reminded me something, Kevin. So yes, J C Watson is with the, um, Koholau Partnership, Watershed Partnership. He's an expert on addressing concerns with albezia trees and how we can mitigate or how we can, um, rid them. It isn't a dangerous situation. If the tree falls, it could cause damage to your house, possibly a power lines and other damage to property near that tree. So, we should have J C Watson if we can. He is gonna come and take a look? Okay, so let's, let's see, cause again, J C Watson's an expert. He, with a tree that's in a precarious position that poses a hazard to area residents, I think the way they do it is they top it off, the top third of the tree, then it'll work down to the middle, and then eventually they'll get to the trunk of the tree, but, um, he's an expert in this, and so, if he's wanting to come out and join us, I think it's great, and hopefully from there we can mitigate, we can hopefully, um, rid, rid us of the tree. So I think the next thing, Kevin and Lynn, if you can let councilmember Dos Santos Tam know, let's work with Kevin and J C Watson on a date and time to go to Uki Uki Place and assess the, the tree and see how we can best, um, eradicate that tree, take the tree down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Kevin, for your concern. Any more community or residents' concern at this time? Seeing and hearing none? Thank you very much. Now let's move on to our city elected officials. First up, we have the mayor or Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative, Ben Master Clark Bright.
Aloha Chair Mizuno. Uh, aloha board members, and congratulations on being elected and for officers as well. We really appreciate your service to the city. Thank you. Just a few announcements and then some updates and follow-ups. First, as you probably already have heard, rail passenger service has begun on Oahu, and on June thirtieth, city leaders, uh, gathered with a grand opening ceremony at Halava Station, featuring live music by the Royal Hawaiian Band and remarks by Mayor Blangiardi, Governor Green and Senator Schatz. Uh, another announcement is the tax relief for homeowners in the F Y twenty-four budget that Mayor Blangiardi just signed. With the city councils adopted three-point-four-one-billion-dollar operating budget, it does include, uh, a historic property tax relief of three-hundred-and-fifty dollars tax credit amounting to roughly fifty-three million, which will be applied directly to property tax bills before they are distributed later this summer. Two central Oahu pools reopened after repairs. One was the Bill Balfour Junior Waipahu District Park reopened on April twenty-eighth after six years of closure, and the Pearl City District Park Pool reopened last month after nearly five years of closure. Just a quick update on the Ivalay Resource Center. It is set to accommodate as many as nineteen patients at a time with a goal to provide permanent housing for patients within one month. And twenty-five million more dollars has been allotted for rental and utility relief program. It's temporarily been reopened this summer thanks to twenty-five million in state and local fiscal recovery funds from the Honolulu City Council. Thank you very much for that, councilmembers. Now, just to follow up on a couple of issues that were requested at the last meeting. One was involving the R H B, and it was a request to perform in the Kalihii Valley Christmas Parade, and yes, we are in the approval process to participate in that parade and still awaiting a response or commitment from Mayor Blangiardi, as he is very busy during that season as well. But yes, your Royal Hawaiian Band will be there. The next one is a question about the airport rail station. Will Skyline passengers need to walk through the airport parking lot to enter the airport? Is there a pedestrian walkway? And from heart, passengers will be able to enter and exit the airport rail station from the ground level or through the Terminal Two and International Parking Garages. There is a pedestrian walkway that will connect both parking structures which are connected to the airport terminals with the rail station. And Chair, that's all I have. Open for questions.
Thank you very much. Question, Mister Tan?
Aloha, Mister Bright. How are you doing?
Aloha, aloha.
Um, I think I had asked you last meeting about the restrooms on the Skyline, uh, stations. If you have an update, is there restrooms for public use?
Yes, there, thank you for that. There are restrooms at the stations. There are none onboard the Skyline, and presently they are being, uh, manned and used only in need. They're not just open to anyone who wants to come in at any time, but there are restrooms at the stations, and yes, you can go up there and request the use of it. There are people that are manning it at this time, yeah.
One, one more, uh, question, um. I, I have, I've tried Skyline, and I thought I'm, I was impressed, and, uh, those two days or four days that were, uh, free, uh, if I'm hearing it correctly, there were about seventy-two thousand riders. And also the news now have reported that the ridership had declined rap, very rapidly. Um, my question is, uh, what has, and I also noticed the advertisement in the TV all over about announcing the reopening. Uh, what will be the city's strategy to, uh, you, uh, make sure that the public utilizes , uh, the existing, um, open rail lines right now?
Yeah, thank you, sir. Uh, I did hear a report this morning that it, it was expected, um, the drop in ridership, but however, they are gonna relook at various options, um, and they're gonna hopefully, uh, try to try to come up with ideas to extend ours or even promote various other options from rail line to bus to encourage that, but, so they're not finished with it yet, they are taking a look at various options as we move forward. Um, for more details on that, I can certainly get either John Nauchi or Roger Morton to contact you again.
Uh, just, uh, just a, two cents, uh, food for thought, I, I, I guess, I'm we're, we're in Waikiki, our union members are, there's a lot of our membership who are from Eva, Waipahu. Um, just a suggestion for our conversations with them, they seem to not know , uh, the connections of from Eva ride a Skyline, then what? So they're, they're afraid not knowing those, they might be late to work, so I guess that would be my two cents to put and consider, and how do you advertise, how do you inform the public about, you know, you rode the Skyline, you will end up in a stadium, and is there a bus, express bus who will pick you up and zoom you go?
Yeah, absolutely, that's, that's exactly what it is. They have added bus routes to the, the Halava Station to help for that specific reason. So if advertising is what needs to be done, then we'll go ahead and request that as well. And they also know that as they open up more stations, the next one should be Middle Street within a couple of years. Uh, that will again continue to raise ridership as we move forward towards town. But we can make that, no, thanks for those concerns. We can, uh, we can pursue those as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Franklin.
Good afternoon, Mister Bright. Mister Bright, I have a, a question I've been asking for three months. As far as the boards are concerned, they say that these boards are very important. I don't understand why these boards, or maybe you can explain, these boards are not fined, uh, funded with like a stipend so we can buy t-shirts when we go out and do recruitment, when we go to the swap meets. Uh, is there any reason why these boards are very important, not given any money or funded at all for, uh, advertisement and recruitment?
I presently would not be able to know that. I, I wonder if Spencer Johnson would be able to help us on that. Spencer, do you know any reason why?
Uh, Mister Franklin, it sounds like you're talking about the outreach funds.
I don't know what funds we can use to buy t-shirts when we're out like begging for memberships or talking to people or give them cups or buttons or whatever we need to do to... Talking to people or give them cups or buttons or whatever we need to do to bring up our. Membership participation in this neighborhood board, because most of the neighbors, they don't even know we exist. So it would be nice to have like the ten or fifteen thousand people living in our board area. If they knew we exist, then they would participate in the meeting. So we can get more than sixteen people every time we show up to show up at the meeting.
Yeah, you bring up a good point and I reminded me. I have some forms for the board members to fill out and on the new contact form. It does ask for shirt sizes. And once we get all the T-shirt sizes and forms from all the members, we will put it in order for T-shirts. And I believe this might be the, I don't know if they've ever had board T-shirts before, but this might be the first time. And yeah, so the banners are gonna be coming too. We already have one that. Mr. Kumalai would like to help me put up at some point. Yeah, so we're, we're working on outreach and. Yeah, like, like, let's, let's talk about.
My question is, why is board is not given the stipend? Why we're not giving like a five thousand dollars a year stipend? So that the budget committee can hang on to it and we can vote on whether we get, well, we don't have to bet the T-shirts. You already get it to us. I mean, we have thirty-four boards. We're not asking for a lot of money. The question is, why aren't the boards funded? That's the question.
If you'd like to contact my, my head of department, Mr. Lloyd Yonanaka, I can email you his phone number, but that's a question that's above my pay grade.
Maybe we could ask him to come to the next meeting. He could explain it to the whole board. He don't have to explain it to me.
He would love to come, yep. I'll get you in contact with that.
Thank you. I would like him to show up so we all can know why these very important boards that we spend a lot of time on. Don't get any stipends or are not funded for any reason whatsoever. That's why I asked the mayor's office about the question instead of, you know, asking your supervisor, because the mayor should know. If they're pushing these boards as hard as they're pushing these boards, then why they under, they're not funding them if they're very important. That's the question. Thank you. I yield back, Chair.
Thank you very much. Any more questions from the board? Seeing none? Questions from the community? Mr. Dana Yap.
Clark, I just want to say thanks for stepping up with the Royal Hawaiian Band. And just to give everybody else a heads up that because of the shortened. Parade route because of the rail. We're planning an extra event after the parade. At Kapalama School, which is like a gathering of the community instead of just the part, parade disbanding. We'll hopefully get the community stay a little while longer and do some activities and stuff like that. So that's still in the works, but I just want to say thanks for committing to do our parade.
Oh, no problem, no problem, Mr. Yap. Thank you very much. It truly is an honor for us to be there. We love coming out to that parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions from the community for the mayor's office? I see and hear none. Thank you very much, Ben Master Clark-Bry.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have council member Tyler Dos Santos Stam's representative, Ms. Lynn Andereco.
Aloha, everyone. Congratulations on all the elected, re-elected board members and officers. Thanks for serving your community. It is very important and you're doing great outreach, even though you, you may not know it, so. Thanks for your service. I just want, I put in the chat the council member, the link to all council members. Newsletters, so the July newsletter is in there. And you can always refer to that website for all of our updates. I also sent those over to Chair and. And to the, to Spencer. And I'm hoping that at the Halei, Kapalama Halei, you guys have hard copies? Is that maybe the case? I sent them interdepartmental mail. And I'm hoping that they, Spencer, do you happen to know if you guys are getting those?
Yeah, I believe so. You know, I think I just forgot to grab them out, but I'm about to go down there anyway. I'll, I'll bring them up.
Okay, I, sorry to call you out. I just, I just wanted to know if the system was working and so. Glad that they made it to you guys. So I won't go over the entire newsletter, but you will see that, that two of the Kalihii. Illegal game rooms have been shut down. And I just want, I will put it in the chat, but with the help of the community, we can keep this up, these efforts to, to make our community safer. So I did want to pass along the number to call to report illegal game rooms. That's the H P D Dark Vice Narcotics and Vice number, which is eight oh eight seven two three three nine three three. And you can report anonymously and that's another way to be a great service to your community. So if you see something suspicious, they appreciate the phone call. And again, I'll put that in the chat once I've completed. Again, we did have a successful Albezia Tree mitigation. Workshop that happened at St. Anthony's Retreat Center. Thanks for all that attended and. I think it's just kind of the beginning of the conversation, so we'll see how we can continue to spread the word. And take action to, again, get rid of these invasive trees that. Yeah, they, they just grow too fast and spread too fast and they are hazardous. And so when they're tiny, we can get rid of them and we'll work on doing that, but when they're large, we need to identify the hazardous trees and then. Do what we can to get those taken down. Lastly, I wanted to report, I, I had sent over the email. I hope you folks got it, but anyhow, I can put this in the chat as well. So coming up next Wednesday, July nineteenth, from ten AM to five PM. It, we were doing a rent and utility relief of event. So this is an opportunity for new applicants that may need rent or utility relief. We're doing that at the Lana Kila Senior Center, which is at fourteen or sixteen forty Lana Kila Avenue. And so I, I'll put that information in the chat as well. I hope we can spread the word. I will say that it's important to call the phone numbers and make an appointment. So and then they'll give you more information about, about how to apply. And what you'll need to have with you as far as documentation to process your application. And with that, I think that's all I have. I know it's getting late. I don't want to belabor the report, but I'd be happy to take any questions. From the board and community members.
Thank you very much, Lynn. Question, Mr. Tan, followed by Mr. Koga.
Aloha, Mr. Robinson.
Aloha.
Hi, would you please share to the board and to the residents about. If that wage increases for the council members has already been finalized and voted?
So it, it has been finalized. And so the last part of that process was that it didn't go to a vote, but it didn't have another meeting. And that's just the protocols and the, the way that the rules are written.
So the voting already happened?
So there was, there was some voting early on. There wasn't a final vote and by default it passed.
Okay, would you please share who had opposed and were, were in favor of the sixty-four percent? Sixty-four percent?
Yeah, I can get back with you. I think that there were four opposed, but I don't want to misspeak.
Was council member Dos Santos Stam voted in favor or opposed?
There was no vote again, but he did not voice his opposition.
What would be, so he did not oppose, opposed, which means he is in favor? Do you, do you know what would be his position? Why is to serving us? There was some who oppose it?
Well, again, I don't have talking points directly for him, so I, I don't want to speak for him. But I do know that. It is a full-time position and our council member is not only working full-time but overtime. And our entire office as well, so I think that. That, you know, that he agreed with that position with the chair.
Could you please pass a follow-up in the next month's meeting to share with us? The names of those who oppose and who are in favor and in particular, our councilman, council member Dos Stam. Of his stated position, why he is in favor?
Sure, I can ask him for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Koga.
Lynn, this is just a follow-up on the question of the no parking on Niihi Street, fronting Kalihuka School. And I know it, last heard from you about a month ago was that. I know you all were trying to set up a meeting with the principal, you know, and I talked to the principal again and. No communication from your office or, or from DTS or. I don't know who else was in charge of doing that. Putting up the no parking sign or getting that instigated, because. I just want to remind the folks, you included that this is, we're already approaching mid-July, schools starts mid-August. So hopefully we can get that squared away, because I noticed that the school for summer, summer school. They're putting up temporary signs on Niihi Street.
So thank you for that follow-up and we did meet with Principal Santos. And he, and took a look at the patterns of traffic. Sat and did it with him. We do see, and he, he explains that there is, there is time in there. About fifteen minutes where that traffic gets, you know, it's burdensome. That, that for drop-off and pickup times, it is burdensome. He is very concerned about no parking out there. He would rather not take away those stalls. Because some of the faculty need to utilize those stalls. And visitors utilize those stalls, so where they have meetings coming in. So there, 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 there are not enough parking stalls to accommodate everyone that works at the school at this time. And so he was actually advising against it.
Oh, really? Yeah, it's kind of a.
And respectfully, and he sees, you know, like, you know, and we did, we, we, myself and our chief of staff. Were out there with him and we just kind of timed it at two different times and yeah, while it is, there's. You know, no one is discrediting your claim that it does get backed up. It's just for a short enough time and that, and that he feels like it'll be a bigger problem if we then take away those stalls. So.
I hope you reminded him that it will be the same window of time that, that's currently posted right, right at entrance there. But again, I, I know, did you all go like within the last few weeks because of doing a regular school? Regular school days, you know, like August through June or May. I, I mean, it can, it can be very bad because it backs up traffic up all the way to Kalih Street.
Yeah, I believe we were there in April before school got out. So it was, it was crowded. There is a good, you know, fifteen-minute window there where it does back up. It's just that he's concerned about taking the stalls away because of the people that need to consistently use those stalls. And then having to move cars or. Yeah, so. Again, no one's discrediting that it's an inconvenience for the people in the area. While the students are getting dropped off and picked up. It's just, he didn't know if it was warranted for us to, to put the no parking.
Okay, I, I just wanted to follow up and if that was the conclusion that was reached, then okay, I won't say anymore. I'll just complain on the side.
Well, we can revisit it again. I mean, you know. But I, yeah, we did meet with them and that's, that was, that was the finding.
Thank you very much, Mr. Franklin.
Rob, I got a quick question. I, there's a new law being proposed that I've made. Clarify for the city council that if you lie to a politician or a city inspector, they want to propose a law to make it a crime?
I think I briefly overheard that. I don't want to comment on that because I'm not very well-versed either. But yeah, I didn't see all of what happened in the meetings today.
For a politician lying, so it can't be for one of them. So I, I thought. I thought that, you know, that if you build a monster home or something, that you got a permit. We should arrest the person that signed the permit off because they're the ones that either took the money or lied about it. So that, there's not enough laws to go after the person who signed the permit? I, I'm most confused about it, but since you, I'll ask next month. That's all, ma'am.
Yeah, let's, let, no, let me communicate, communicate with you before next month and try to, I know that. Maybe we need some more clarification on the intent. It was confusing, yeah. I want to follow up with you though about Kalihuka. That this coming Wednesday, we'll be meeting with the Parks and Rec folks. So the district director will be out there and we're going to go over some of those security measures with lighting and cameras. To see what might be feasible. The two people that are coming out have some experience with. Doing these improvements in some of the other parks, so that is kind of, you know, that's moving forward as well. So I appreciate your bringing that to our attention.
The beautification committee or you want me to just go now? Because I'm worried about. Like, we talked about replacing the school sign that's already there, but it's just outdated. When people flying up Kalihuka, coming past the school, that school sign is there, but it doesn't work. So all the infrastructure is already there. The one next to KC Market, we walked down to it, me and you. It's a school sign, this speeding sign, the one that says, you know, how fast you going when you're approaching the school?
And that, oh yeah, the solar sign that's broken.
Right, right. It, it shows people their speed, right, as they're coming up. It's right in front of the school. Some people go on like forty-five, fifty.
I put a riser in for that. I need to follow up with that. Thank you for the follow-up.
I wait for the rest of the beautification committee.
Okay.
I got like fifteen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rojas.
Hi, one question for the city. I wanted to. Mention about when are they going to fix the guardrail on Kamaneiki Street? I think that's very dangerous. It should be looked at and put an attention to it. I don't know who's responsible for that, for repairing, but it's been too, it's, it's haven't been fixed for, for over a couple of weeks now, I think.
Was there like a crash and it's damaged now?
Yes.
I see. Do you, if I get, if I put my email in the chat, will you send that to me? And then I can draft a riser to have someone look at it, a request for investigation and service report?
Yes.
Okay, I'll put my, I'll make sure and put my information.
I think that, that's, that should be fixed ASAP, because you know what, if we, that's considered as transportation plus for death health hazard.
Yeah, that does sound dangerous.
Yes. We, we can fix other roads, but we need to fix that, that people hangs out there and there's a house that is right behind that guardrail. And I think that's, that should be fixed ASAP.
Okay, I'll put, I'm putting my information in the chat. If you can email that to me. About, and any details about exactly where it is?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more questions for council member Dos Santos Stam's office from the board? I see and hear none. Questions from the community? Mr. Song.
Yeah, so the Bezia Tree Seminar.
Yeah, so the Albezia Tree uh um seminar, I asked Mr. Mizuno and uh Councilman uh Santos about the park that's up from the Board of Water Supply. Um just hearing knowing if uh um if he moved forward on any of that request about cleaning it up.
By the by the Board of Water Supply?
What what park is that? We were talking about that?
Oh. The one where I'm not sure.
Which?
Oh, Pe'iva.
Pe'iva.
End of Pe'iva.
End of Pe'iva.
Again, can you email that to me so that I can put in a request or follow-up? I'm not sure that I did that riser.
At the end of Pe'iva Street, Lynn, I can um email you that information. I know exactly what they're talking about.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Any more questions from the community for?
No, keep it down.
Any more questions for Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office? I hear and see none. Thank you very much, Lynn. See you next month.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have our state elected officials. Governor Josh Green's representative, Deputy Director Kristen Sakamoto.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha, everyone. Uh Kristen Sakamoto, Deputy Director of Taxation, uh here tonight on behalf of the Office of the Governor. Congratulations to the new board. I shared a link to the governor's newsletter in the chat and I'm just gonna highlight one thing from the newsletter. Um so the Homeowner Assistance Fund Program, it's a program provided through HHFDC, the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. It provides mortgage assistance to homeowners who experienced financial hardship during the pandemic. Um so the program is expanding its eligibility to provide more assistance to Hawaii homeowners. So effective immediately, the program is being expanded to increase the maximum assistance per household from thirty thousand to sixty thousand dollars. Um additionally, forward or non-outstanding mortgage assistance will be available for up to twelve months and increased from the previous six-month duration. And uh homeowners no longer need to be delinquent to qualify for assistance and reverse mortgage homeowners will now also be eligible. Uh so for more information, um you can visit HHFDC's website and the link for that is in the newsletter. Um so that's all I'm gonna be sharing tonight. In addition to the question that I was already given regarding the red light cameras, um Chair, I think you had mentioned an issue with um Lekelike Street. If you could elaborate that for me, um and then if there are any other questions, I can take back to the office as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um on Lekelike Corner, Alu Street, there is a new entrance opened by the Kalihu Valley Homes. I think the reason is they are doing construction on the other side. However, it created so much um traffic and congestion on Wilson Track. So even just tonight, while we are doing our meeting, I'm also seeing an email from Mr. McDonald um regarding this issue as well. So like this afternoon, I was coming home, going going Mauka. There were three cars who turned left to the housing. And there's a big sign there saying no left turn nor U-turn. So that alone, I couldn't take a video because I was driving, so that alone is a very, very concerning issue right there. And secondly, well, some some of the housing residents were kind enough to go to Wilson, turn right to Wilson. And then you turn on the intersection there on Wilson and Alu. But it's creating a lot of um traffic according to the Wilson Track neighbors there. So we receive at least, at least one, two, three, four, more than five residents um bringing up this concern, so. For the department though, for the state side, it's gonna be the Lekelike side signs. And for the city side, it's going to be the Alu and Wilson uh street um intersection right there will be the um issue. But in addition to that, Representative Mizuno would like to say something on that later on. So um let's move along with Mr. Franklin. You have questions for Governor's Office?
Yes, I want to ask the governor about housing uh because everyone talks about the shortage of housing in this country. But in the United States, I'm trying to figure if the governor is trying to stop it. There's like nine companies and they own eighty thousand homes each. Mainly in the Sun Belt and they're headed to Hawaii. Uh is the governor gonna propose any legislation to keep these companies from buying like all the homes, like the eighty thousand homes like they're doing in the Sun Belt? Cause there's eight companies that own eighty thousand homes each. And that's why we have a housing shortage. I want to know if the governor is planning on stopping them or passing legislation to keep them from doing that.
Thank you for the question. Um I will ask the Office of the Governor and get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions from the board for the Governor's Office? I see and hear none. Any questions from the community? I see and hear none. Thank you very much, Deputy Director Sakamoto.
Thank you.
See you next month. All right, moving on to Senator Donna Mercado Kim's office, we have Ms. Bernie Kaalim.
Thank you, Chair Mizuno and neighborhood board members. Uh by now, Senator Mercado Kim uh community report has been sent to you and if you did not receive it, I'm still sending you your email in the chat box. Just have to call her office and I will be happy to um send you a copy of your email. And for the uh community members also participating in the neighborhood board meeting, yes, feel free to jot me a a chat, your email in the box there and I will send it to you. Just jumping into uh her community report, May-June capital improvement project releases. We see with the elementary school, one point four million released to finance and design and construction for improvements to comply with current ABA standards and the constituent bases for day August twenty twenty-five. Malukia, four hundred sixty-four thousand dollars to replace the exit doors and one hundred thousand dollars to upgrade parking lots for lighting uh to uh to energy savings. The state transit-oriented development TOD planning, three hundred fifty thousand for the plans for the new development of statewide Kamea Mayor Homes and Ka'ahu Manu Homes in Kalihu to include evaluation of mixed-use development and infrastructure needs, environmental review and integration of complete street elements and multimodal mobility offering. Um and the last one, interstate route H1 Eastbound improvements. Uh one point four million dollars to finance additional construction for H1 Eastbound improvements from all the lane overpass from the Lekelike off-ramp. Uh the governor's intent to veto, we know that the CBT is one billion dollars from the executive budget. With regard to constituent concerns that have been expressed to Senator Kim's office, I just want to point out that the abandoned home on Malu Street, Malu Street, that is, uh there are complaints to her about the dilapidated and abandoned house that's overrun by homeless folks. And um that was because it was next door to the constituent. So with the help of Councilmember Tom and city officials and the Honolulu Police Department, the home on twelve-sixteen Malu Street has been demolished after property owners took corrective action. We know right turn on red sign on Kula, Kulea Drive. Residents of Kalihu Valley have voiced their concerns about the N R T O R sign um being hard to see. So after reaching out to the um State Department of Transportation, um Senator Kim's office was able to have the new sign installed in a location that is more visible. But sadly, the new and old sign has been since completed. And so we informed DOT about it and said those will be addressed and hope to get an update for the next year. But uh following on this same line of uh Kula, Kulea Drive and Lekelike uh we just said that um DOT that has been monitoring the intersection and priority management procedures. And that we're seeing that clearing all queues within one cycle. So that's that's what I'm saying right there. So DOT feels the best solution for the intersection with the low right turn on red is that. The monitoring was performed during the school year and during the summer break to determine if there were any additional considerations uh DOT needed to address. DOT will continue to monitor when school starts again. And we'll get back to um Senator Kim's office um if there is anything for the further adjustments. Um and lastly, uh we see in the community report, the list of GIA grant in place for twenty twenty-three. I just want to highlight two, Kalihu Valley Homes, eight hundred thousand dollars for demolition and disposal of community center. And for Kua Valley, for Kua Kalihu Valley Comprehensive Family Services, one hundred fifty thousand for continuation of services. And in person, um we just know that Senator Kim's community bulletin was mailed out to you um uh to all District fourteen constituents and residents to vote. Um we just wanted to point that out. Are there any questions at this time?
A question. Regarding the Kalihu Valley Homes uh Community Center, are there plans to reconstruct or to um plan and design and build a a new community center or they're just gonna tear it down?
Um.
I mean, are there are there are there funds allocated for for subsequent redesign?
I'm I'm sorry, I need to follow up with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more, any questions from the board?
I just want to add, I'll I'll get back to you tomorrow with the answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for Senator Kim's office? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you very much, um Ms. Kaalim.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have Representative John Mizuno.
Yeah, hi. Is Deputy Director Sakamoto still here? I guess not.
Yes, I'm still here.
Oh, you're here. Great. I'll let you know the email I just sent. It's Sniffen and Sergeant Oato of HPD. I'm requesting your kind assistance with concerns on Lekelike Highway as many cars heading windward bound are making illegal turn, an illegal turn into Kalihu Valley Homes, public housing at the intersection of Alu Street and Lekelike Highway. It appears that Kalihu Valley Homes has now opened the gate which fronts Lekelike Highway where Alu Street intersects the highway. And therefore, cars are making illegal turns from Lekelike Highway to Kalihu Valley Homes. And I just got a a reply email lightning fast from Department of Transportation Director Ed Sniffen. And in his reply, he said, "Thank you for letting us know. I'll send our staff out to see what we can adjust from the infrastructure side and coordinate Sergeant Oato on the overall approach." So I wanted to thank you, Governor Green, as well as uh Director of Transportation Ed Sniffen for doing a a real good job and addressing our concerns. He's gonna have his team take a look at it, so thank you so much. Next up, Decoy Park. I heard some people, some of our community members talk about the concerns with the park. And I do want to say that we had a meeting yesterday with Councilmember Dos Santos Tam along with Sergeant Oato, HPD and city administrators. Here's the situation, Lynn, if you're still there, um what the city outreach workers were saying regarding the homeless, it was too dangerous to deal with the homeless, so many times they would walk around there and not do anything or just leave. There was also a report that a homeless person at the park was carrying a machete. And they failed to report this to HPD, the city uh failed to report this to HPD. So HPD Sergeant Oato explained that you need to report information of that magnitude. If that person had the machete and attacked someone, uh we could have lost a life. And so we really need to work with the city officials dealing with the homeless to report to HPD. I I don't know what the concern is. Um but that was made, that point was made clearly. In addition, HPD, working with um our office and Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office, agreed that we're gonna send, um we did, we actually sent a joint email to Parks Director Thielen. Now Laura Thielen used to be a senator. I know her. She works really well. We implored her to work on removing the trash from the park, fixing the damaged facilities at the Decoy Park and removing heavy vegetation such as bushes and trimming the trees along the hillside. This is where the police saying that the homeless will hide at. And and again, everyone knows me. I I am the biggest advocate to help our homeless. Help them heal, help them get back to self-sufficiency. With that said, we need to do all we can to protect our area neighbors. And if there are people that um might be suffering with a mental condition or a drug addiction or both and may become um a danger, we need to address it and police need to help. And the way they can help is if we clear that area. So we got uh an email out to the Parks Director. I anticipate we're gonna do um a better job with that. I wanted to also notify people, I think I heard Senator Kim's office uh talk about the removal of one of the squatter homes, sixteen-twelve Alu 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 Street near Decoy Park. I just wanted to show members, so you can see this. This was a squatter house just a a month ago, which would be a magnet for homeless and um Councilmember and I worked and HPD as well as the city officials, uh Department of Facility Maintenance, you know, listened to us and now that squatter home is gone. Again, I I have nothing against our homeless. I want to help our homeless. But that was an area of prime and concern with a lot of our neighbors and today it's it's demolished. So I I wanted to share with the members here, continue to be vigilant and work with us. We want to help our homeless get to a shelter, get uh recovery rehabilitation. But also at the same time, we need to be vigilant and protect our area neighbors. If you see a monster home, let us know. We will close it down. In addition, you did, I don't want to go over uh in detail about the albezia trees. You heard Kevin talk about it. We're gonna be helping him. Um so let me just keep it in really short. Uh let me, I guess, sum it up. The reason why albezia trees are are really dangerous, they're invasive, they're they're not originally from Hawaii. They damage our plants, they damage our environment and they hurt the watershed. Um these trees grow really large within a few years. They're very brittle, topside, and many times the top branches and and the top part of the tree will fall, break and again, causing damaged roads, homes, power lines. Uh we'll continue to work with the community members and we'll probably hold one more town hall meeting uh because albezia trees um grow. We have significant growth of albezia trees in Kalihu. In fact, we went to hold that meeting at Saint Anthony Retreat Center in Kalihu Valley. And onsite, we're able to eradicate probably fifteen or twenty albezia trees on the spot. So it it is a hazard, especially in Kalihu Valley. We want to protect um our residents, protect property, protect the infrastructure, our power lines. So look forward to working with us. We'll continue to work with you on this hazard. Just got a few more things to add. I'll be holding a legislative briefing on safe alternatives to opioids on August tenth this year at eleven AM at the Capitol. I've got an expert coming from Utah, Utah Senator Kurt Bramble, former Senate President of Utah. Uh he's got expertise in this area along with other experts on pain management and harm reduction. Really think that pain management, physical therapy, therapeutic massage, uh maybe even count, medical cannabis are viable options. Finally, well, two other things. Finally, well, two other things and I'll close. We're working to ensure Kalih youth have a safe um place to have recreation, safe options. Working with Senator Kidani and I'm met with Adult Friends for Youth as well as youth leaders. I I won't mention the public housing. Um, place that we're working with uh until we we start to finalize all the things. But long story short, a lot of our Polynesian youth do not have recreational activities. Some of them end up in in youth gangs and and other things. We we have a plan to work with Kalih Community Center. Along with others to provide free, free recreational activities. MMA for kids, hula, hip-hop dancing, youth boxing, and financial literacy courses for these youth. In addition, we'll try to have these services available to adults uh in Kupuna. So again, this is at some of our public housing areas. I don't want to finalize it yet until it gets more crystallized to we're more close to announcing that. Um, and finally, I will be doing a town hall meeting regarding how we should reform law. Either this month or next month. I heard Mister Song, I believe I saw him at the Albezia Workshop. Had some concerns with um the red light camera and other things. We would like to have the Attorney General's Office, HPD, City Prosecutor's Office. Department of Education, Department of Human Services, along with parents and children devastated by crime to work with us to determine. What laws need to be reformed to effectively reduce harm and stop violent crimes? I have been implored by the parents of the young lady that was hit uh while on a moped. And she was dragged over three hundred yards on asphalt by a a driver under the influence. The tragic thing about this is he was released pending investigation. He fled, went to Guam. And he was caught on Guam, were awaiting his extradition to Hawaii. Uh, their family really wants to see the laws be a lot stronger to stop these type of drivers. Um, and it's not only that, we've heard about the young lady that was killed near McKinney High School. That driver had over a hundred traffic citations, but yet he's still driving. So we really want to work on a number of um focus on reform, see how we can do this the right way. And hopefully we can come back and draft laws that will make it a lot stronger to protect our people. Last note, again, please contact my office or Tyler Dos Santos Tam's office. Uh, if you want to, if you have concerns with crime homelessness, even cutting grass, tree trimming, albezia trees. Repair of road sidewalks, call us and we'll do our best to help you. Thank you. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board for Representative Mizuno? Seeing none, any questions from the community? Mister Song.
You're the person I should be asking, but the entrance that they're resurfacing at Kalih Valley Homes. How long is it gonna take?
Sorry, we can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
Oh, it is. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So the Kalih Valley Home, the entrance to Kalih Valley Homes, how long is that gonna take to uh uh get fixed? I've been having uh uh best of my family, we're guessing about five, ten years. Um, is it gonna be that long? Does anyone know?
To fix that Kalih Valley Homes.
The entrance? Where the repaving?
Entrance, I believe, is working.
The one on Taffo Road? They're repairing it. Entrance, not the exit.
It should be done, I anticipate that it should be done within six months. I think that was a. Capital Improvement Project that Tyler has asked me to request funding for, and I think we got funding for that uh renovation. I would anticipate it should be done within three to six months, but now that we reported to the State Department of Transportation. The concerns with the um illegal left-hand terms, hopefully they can hasten the uh repair and do it. Hopefully within two to three months. So good point that you brought up.
Thank you.
That, yeah, that's causing the traffic to go in the middle of town um Kalih Valley Homes. That's exactly, that's the reason why we're having traffic problems on Leeki Leeki Highway.
Thank you. Any more questions for Representative Mizuno? If not, thank you very much, Representative Mizuno. Okay, moving on, we have a presentation from the City and County of Honolulu Office of Climate Change. Sustainability and Resiliency, Long-Term Disaster Recovery and Post-Disaster Mitigation Plan. Go ahead, Mister, who is it? Anybody from the City and County of Honolulu Office of Climate Change? I see and hear none. Okay, let's move on to our. Here we go, the Standing Committee Report, Miss Leigh Aloha. Go, just um. Um, say a few things about what you have said earlier.
Well, just to continue off, actually, I do want to switch to my headset, but just to continue off. Um, asking for um locations, that's a new um part of the um. The banners is the lo- key locations. So I do want to have ideal intersections. Uh, or like specifically in those areas. I did list off schools already, churches, um residents. Um, if you guys know any of. Who have the corner houses. Um, but yeah, the the total, like I I calculated, um. I was trying to do just nine banners, but it it added up to about like seven hundred, eight hundred. So we could actually add one more banner so we can do the full ten and do ten locations. So, yeah. And we'll have to do the whole crew ourselves. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, co-chair Tombaga for that update. And hopefully we're gonna have those uh banners up pretty soon. Alright, moving on to our board business, a resolution for adoption urging the City and County of Honolulu employees to follow up rules. And Code of Conduct. Mister Franklin.
You need to know something about that? I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I I thought that. That we were just voting on it to get them to um identify themselves when they answer the phones. When you talk to them, they don't ask you like crazy questions like you're uh like you're nosy or. You're whatever they say instead of just telling you who they are. I thought the board was gonna take a vote on it last month. I don't know if the board did or not. I wasn't here.
No, we actually tabled it last during our last month's uh meeting. However. Um, there was a discussion regarding that resolution previously that it was kind of steep. And we could water it down. So therefore we um. We drafted a watered-down resolution and it was sent out last month. So did every, did every um, did all of you receive that watered-down resolution? During our last month's um meeting? If not, Spencer can share it to us here. Spencer, are you able to? There you go. So that's the watered-down resolution that we are going to vote on if there is no objection. So Mister Franklin, I would like you to um make a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm motion to pass the resolution.
Any second?
I second the motion, Fernando.
Thank you very much. So it has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There, if there is no discussion, let's go for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or raise your hand? All those opposed, say no? The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Now let's move on to the approval of the regular meeting minutes for the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Can we get a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second, any second?
I second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded for the approval of our. Meeting minutes for June fourteen, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion? Mister I, uh, Ms. Iris Oda.
Oh, hi there. I was just um noticing in the minutes, it says that I was not present. But I was present.
Last month's meeting?
Yeah, in the June, if I'm looking, June fourteenth minutes. Um, after HPD. No representative, it says, either for them also. I took the online version. So.
Oh, so you were here last month?
Yeah, I was here last month and then I do notice for June, yeah. And then I noticed further down. The minutes before the, sorry, after Dos Santos Tam, sorry. It says that Nicole, someone else attended, which, sorry, where'd she go?
Nicole?
Yeah, so that's not accurate either. So I'm not sure why it's in that location too. So just those two comments.
Okay, so which um?
I was present and I.
Mentioned.
She did, yeah, she did not attend, but what she read, what's on there is what I read.
Oh, so you you were here and not Nicole?
Correct. And what was written in Nicole's area is what I read.
Oh, really? Okay, okay. Um, you got that, Spencer? Okay, very good. Any more discussion? Thank you, Iris. Any more discussion on our meeting minutes last month? If not, we are going to vote on these minutes as amended. All those in favor, say aye. Or raise hand?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Did I hear a no? The motion is carried. Okay, we are on other reports. The Chair's report, I, the Chair doesn't have any report as of the moment. So announcement, next month, Wednesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-three is our next meeting. And broadcast meetings are aired on Olelo Channel forty-nine. On the fourth Saturday of the month at six P M and the first and third Sunday of the month. At nine A M. Any more announcements? If not, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.